O Canada, our home and native land. To page with love, we all have sounds of man. We hold in hearts we see right, the true Lord strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God give our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you everybody and welcome. Before we get going, I would like to have a motion to, no, is there any disclosure of community interest or nature's thereof? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the council minutes from the previous meeting. Councillor Wilkinson, Councillor Thiessen, all in favor? Carried. Was there any business arising from the meeting? Seeing none, we'll go right into reports. Tonight we'll start with the presentation from Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And I have Chowee Hamka here, which kind of threw me for a minute there, it's mothers, and I just, thank you, welcome.
Yeah, I get that a lot actually. I'm a concerned citizen, I guess, if you look at it in that regard. Good evening, Deputy Mayor Verbikey, councillors and all attendants here tonight. My name, thank you for the opportunity you've given me to be here tonight at your town council meeting. My name is Chowke Hamka. I'm the community leader for Mothers Against Drunk Driving, MAD Windsor Essex County. I've been involved with MAD Canada, MAD Windsor Essex County now, for the past 15 years. Most recent, I've been elected and I sit on the MAD Canada National Board of Directors as the Director for Ontario West. As you may already know, impaired driving is a leading criminal cause of death in Canada. Every year, hundreds are killed and tens of thousands are injured. MAD Canada has worked tirelessly over the past 32 years to educate the public, raise awareness, and support victims of this violent crime. We have found a lot of success with our programs and are proud to say that we have helped save tens of thousands of lives since our inception. However, there is no easy fix for the issue. We continuously work with our partners, government agencies, police services, and our communities to lessen deaths and injuries on our roads to hopefully put an end to impaired driving once and for all. One of our key national programs, Campaign 911, has been successful in involving the public in the efforts to help police take impaired drivers off our roads. When we look at the first item up on the screen there, it gives you a little bit of an overview of our campaign. I'm just going to be brief about the campaign, and then whatever questions you have for me, I will be more than happy to answer them. So Campaign 911 was launched in 2007. It's our most innovative awareness programs to date. This national campaign encourages and empowers Canadians to help make roads safer and reduce impaired driving deaths and injuries by alerting police to suspected impaired driving before potentially deadly crash occurs. Campaign 911 now is effective in all of Canada. We've enacted signs and programs across the country in all provinces, big cities, small towns, villages. It's been a great, great success. And like I mentioned earlier, the whole point of the program is to encourage and empower the public to call 911 to report suspected impaired drivers. This campaign in itself has grown extensively since the launch in 2007. Call 911 signs, like I mentioned, are in all of communities across the country. And we've found that more and more people are calling 911 to report suspected impaired drivers. I think what used to happen was people were afraid or just didn't have the courage to make that call for whatever reason, whether it's they felt that they might be calling to ruin someone's life, possibly rat on somebody, we don't know the exact reasoning, but I think with this program, what it's done now, it's empowered them and given them the choice to, you know what, to keep our roads safe, we need to do our part by calling 911 to report suspected impaired drivers. And it's not just about suspected impaired drivers as a whole. There could be, people always tell me all the time, well, what if they're swerving because they're doing something else? Or, and that's fine, somebody can have a medical condition, somebody could be texting and driving, somebody could be, on whatever the case is, you're making a call to potentially save someone's life, including your own. And some of the results, the numbers are quite high, which is amazing. So 911 calls to report suspected impaired drivers increased between 20, sorry, 45 to 80 percent in the first year. So 45 percent to 80 percent increase, which is huge for the campaign in its initial year. Impaired driving charges and roadside licence suspensions have increased between 30 to 80 percent. Now those numbers seem high, far in between, but what we've seen especially locally, because this program is effective in Windsor now, we have over 50 signs in Windsor alone since 2008. And talking to the 911 communicators and administration in the city of Windsor, they're very, very proud to say obviously that there's had been over 50 percent increase in calls alone just to report suspected impaired drivers. And out of those calls, the police interception rates were from 20 to 50 percent. So we're talking about almost 50 percent of those calls are getting dealt with right away, which is, at the same time astronomical and it's great for our community. So with that said, I'm here today for two primary reasons. To get the town of Leamington's support for our Campaign 911 program and to approve the installation of 10 permanent road signs in the town of Leamington. So the signs you see, they're there, that is the final draft of the sign. It would have the OPP logo, R logo, and the town of Leamington logo on the sign if approved. The signs come in two sizes, 24 by 30, and the larger signs are four feet by six feet. We're hoping to get 10 signs up, and hopefully we can get some of the larger signs up as well. And the larger signs, those are usually installed at entry and exit points in and out of the town. And those, I think, give us the best exposure. The smaller signs are great to have within the town limits, but I think those larger signs get the most exposure. And obviously, everything that we do would be with your bylaws and we would work with administration to put up the signs however way it works.
Great, thank you for your report and congratulations to being on the national board.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for Chowee? So the report's okay, what are your wishes for the 10 signs going up? Would you, somebody like to move that we, anybody? Yes, go ahead, Councillor Wilkinson?
If you don't mind, I just, I heard you say, thank you by the way, of the 10 signs here, how many were the four by sixes and how many were the 24 by 30s again, if you don't mind?
That's something we would work out with administration. So we would look at the map of Leamington, see where the signs could possibly go, and we would take that route. So I mean, I'm just driving around in Leamington, I already have some ideas of where signs could possibly go, but that's something I would have to sit down with the Parks and Rec Engineering Department to kind of figure out what's the best way to approach it and where the signs, we want to look at the most traffic areas for sure to get the most exposure. And at the end of the day, if we can get larger signs out there, that's great. If we can't, we can't, but we're hoping that we can get at least a few. I'm hoping three large signs out in anywhere, entry and exit points in and out of the town if possible.
I think the program's great, I do, don't get me wrong, it's just 10 signs, a lot of signs, especially the bigger ones. You know, are we going to kind of, I think our kind of our entrance points around town need a little bit of looking at as it is. With the service group signs that we have out there, they're starting to look a little old and tired, if you ask me, especially one out by the IGA there. But if we start putting up more at these, are we just kind of adding to a little bit of a, I don't know, you know, are we oversigning people? I'd just like to put a little bit of thought, I'm all for, you know, the little ones, maybe if you want to put them on posts, but when it comes to the bigger ones, I'd like to put just a little bit of thought behind that with our, with our staff here, just to, is my initial reaction, that's, but as for supporting the program, it sounds great.
No, I appreciate it, no, absolutely, and it's something we do have to look at for sure. Like I said, if we can't get larger signs up, that's fine. I think the most important thing here is, you know, to have Leamington on board, right? We have, we have the city of Windsor, Emsberg signed on, La Salle's signed on, Tecumseh signed on. So I think as a whole, because you know, we're MAD Windsor Essex County, and I feel that we've somewhat neglected the Leamington area. I think Leamington needs the MAD presence. We do a lot in terms of awareness, we do a lot in terms of education, and I myself come to Leamington and do presentations, but I think we need more of a MAD presence here. The issue's not just in larger cities, small towns have the impaired driving issue. We work closely with the OPP, they support the program 100 percent. At the end of the day, it's not just about the signs itself, it's about the support that we get from council and the municipality of Leamington. So like I said, if we can't get larger signs up there, that's fine. If, hopefully, we can at least manage to get one or two up somewhere, like I said, the more, the larger signs, it's the better exposure that we get. The smaller signs are still a good size, 24 by 30 is still a good size, it's just we have to find the right locations again for the 24 by 30. So, but that's something we can definitely discuss more in detail, look at it, there's no, there's no complete rush on this. But we are hoping for a May 1st implementation date of the program. But again, that can definitely be rescheduled to the 1st of June if we have to. Right now, we're just waiting on Tecumseh, other than that, everybody else is on board at this point.
Sure, thank you for doing this by the way, taking this effort on. It's just, yeah, that's my only thought is that I'd like our staff to have a little bit of input on the bigger signs, especially where they're gonna, I don't know, they're gonna be at our town entrances, where I put a lot of stock into our towns entrances, you know, you want to make them look nice when people enter the town, and I think we need to look at that as it is right now, especially when it comes to those service signs we have at every entrance point in town, they're looking a bit tired there, so that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Councillor Wilkinson, and you gave up your age there when you said IGA. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you for your report, I agree, I would like to see, see some of these signs put up, and I would, I think some of the larger signs could be put further out, say at the entrance on Kent Road 1 out near the 11, somewhere coming right into the municipality, doesn't necessarily need to be the town, but somewhere out in, the larger signs might be bigger, better out there and the smaller ones towards town. But I would be in favor of this, and unless Councillor Hammond has something to say, I would move that we have administration work with, with your organization and, and see if we can put some signs up.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor, seconded by Councillor Hammond with a comment.
The comment, thank you Deputy Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Hamka, I, I think we all understand the importance of, and the work that's being done by MAD, and I think we all support that here. And to further the comments made by Councillor Thiessen, yes, I think that as a group that we should support this, how many signs we put up and where they go, we're going to have, obviously, count our administration to give us that guidance, maybe with your help, and they'll bring it back to us, and we will, we'll get them up there. So thank you for being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I think, councillor, there you go, pretty soon Rob. Rob there, will you be the contact in between, do you have any comments on this right now, Rob, or you have exchanged information? Thank you very much. No further questions? Motion on the floor, all in favor? And carried, thank you very much.
Thank you guys, thank you very much.
Moving on to 10.2, the Leamington Triathlon Weekend and Southern Footprint request to waive fencing fees. Mr. Campbell?
My name is David Campbell, I'm race director for Southern Footprints and Leamington Triathlon Weekend. My purpose of being here today is, is to get an exemption for the delivery of the fencing for the two events. Southern Footprints is in its 12th year. The money that we raise goes to Crime Stoppers and Rotary Club. Last year, we gave $2,500 to Crime Stoppers and about $1,200 to Essex Rotary. We try to put on these events to help as many nonprofits as we can. Leamington Triathlon Weekend, I believe, is in its 30th some year. This year, the committee has decided that money, and we don't have the numbers yet depending on people who show up, the money will go to the bridge, the cleaners, and we always take a day at the Leamington Recreation Complex and have a free day for the kids. So that is my request to just be exempted from the delivery charge for the fencing.
Thanks Dave. So 12 years you've been doing this, I'm sure you've got a grant before, haven't you?
No.
You never got a grant, did you, were you notified about our grant request?
Yes, I was.
And?
I just, we just wanted an exemption. We didn't want to, I know that the grant people, some people got $500 and the fencing cost is not even that much money. We just want to be exempted for whatever the actual cost is so we can give more money away. We do well, we want to make sure we support things in town, so.
Okay, I'll.
I mean, we can go through the grant procedure, but.
Oh, it's too late for this year.
I have, public meeting, don't ask me questions sir, but I have some concerns on the way it's set up, and I've shared that.
We've talked to administration about that for, hopefully next year, but I just, my request to waive, now what are we, what are we requesting, 100, 200, 500?
Just whatever the cost is, I believe, if I did my research right, for example, Southern Footprints would be $200 because we're asking, you'd have to ask Mr. Brown, but I believe it's $10 a section is the new rate, I believe.
So you're.
So Southern Footprints only uses 20 pieces.
Okay, so but, but you're also asking for in kind, or you want actual dollars?
I would like it in kind.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Councillor Wilkinson?
Now, Leamington Triathlon Week, oh sorry, Tim, for the Leamington Triathlon Weekend, we ask that it all be delivered because for safety, we block off the whole promenade down there because they're coming out of water and bikers and runners, so we, I'm not sure what the cost would be in town for the whole, because I believe the Tomato Festival gave it, gave them about 1,700 feet, I believe.
Okay. Councillor Wilkinson?
Well, my, my only question I had with this is, yeah, I'd like an actual figure, and I think that's one of the reasons why we wanted to put it back to the grant request time, is because we gather up that information back then. We went through a lot of work this year, especially on Laura's part here, to kind of get our ducks in a row when it comes to, we want to, we want to help the community, especially with where the event's like this. But that's the time and place for us to do it so that we can concentrate on regular business during our council meetings here, you know? I'm disappointed, you know, if you were told ahead of time that you should have gone through the grant request, you know?
I was not, I was not told that. I never got an email this year. I know that for some other things, I was recommended that I go to the grant committee. The problem, I guess, the problem I have, and I think the process is good, but for me, in the middle of October, to have the budget set up for the Leamington Triathlon Weekend that doesn't happen till the middle of June, sometimes is not always possible. And the request, if I understand right, the request procedure says I have to have budgets, financial statements done by October for an event that doesn't happen till June.
That's what we do here too.
I know.
Well, anyway, it was my understanding that you were made aware quite clearly.
Last year, last year I was, yes.
Process, so, and you know, it's a great event, Dave, appreciate everything you do in the community, you've done a lot, and this is a great one as well, it always has been. But please, for next year, like I say, the administration is trying to get all our ducks in a row when it comes to helping out where the community events, and that should be done at the grant request time, there's a reason why we do that. So that's my only comment. I would like to know an actual dollar amount.
I was told $200.
$200? Can that be verified by one of our staff?
Ken, you want to come up please?
So I, yeah, I crunched some quick numbers, so yeah, for the, it's basically $10 a section, and so for the Southern Footprints run, yeah, it'd be about $200 because they usually take 20 sections. For the Leamington Triathlon, that one, we've always had an agreement because I think the triathlon committee had originally, this is before my time, but had purchased the fencing.
Tomato, Tomato Festival.
Oh, the Tomato Fest group, yeah. So if you're renting all of it, there's 97 sections, so then that would be $970 for all of it.
On top of the 200.
Well, no, the.
There's a separate event.
Yeah, separate events.
So you're only coming here for one?
No, I'm coming here for two events, to save, save time for council, I'm just here for both events. I'm race director for Southern Footprints and I'm also race director.
So we're putting the 970 on top of the 200, so you're coming here tonight looking for $1,200?
For both events, yes, okay.
Thank you, that's, want to clear that too. Councillor Thiessen?
I'm going to echo what Deputy Mayor and Councillor Wilkinson have said, that that's the reason we have the grant process, is to do it at one time. To have those budgets set up early enough in the year that we know what's going, what we're doing going forward. I'm struggling with this for $1,200 because there's other events that we also wanted to give more money to. I know Councillor Hammond was looking for more for Salvation Army, I was looking for more for, for the bridge, there were others that we would like to give more money to, but this year, we had more groups and more money, more money was given out, more groups are coming looking for money. And these are the kinds of things that we need to do at that time. I understand it's difficult to make a budget that far in advance, but you've been doing those long enough that I, it can't be a whole lot different than what it has been in the past. I'm just having a hard time, I'm having a hard time getting my head around supporting that, only because we've already given out the money through the grant process, which this should fall under.
Okay. Any other questions? Councillor Hammond?
Deputy Mayor, thank you. Yeah, Dave, I think you've heard, you know, pretty much what the thoughts are here, but nevertheless, I think it's a well worth project, and I, I encourage you to go through the grant process next year. However, this year, I'm going to make a motion that we, we in kind, supply the fencing for the, for the two events.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, seconded. Councillor Wilkinson? Any questions? My only one is now, budget's coming in the end of November, 1st to December, for this year, so we're doing two budgets in one year, so get in or I don't think this will be going good next year, so. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Can I make sure I'm on, how do I make sure I'm on the list for?
Talk to the lady right at the end.
To Laura?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next one coming up is the Sloan Drain, and I was told by our drainage superintendent that Alan, you are going to take care of this tonight, so I'm looking forward to this.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The Sloan Drain, the purpose of this report is to award a contract for maintenance on the Sloan Drain and Branches to Rivard Excavating. The drain maintenance was requested and is required on the Sloan Drain and Branches of this municipal drain, you can see the extent of that work presented in Figure 1 of the report. Typical of drain maintenance and full cleanouts would include brushing of all trees and shrubs, ditching, culvert flushing, erosion control, and leveling of the spoil material from the top, sorry, from the drain along the tops of the banks of the drain. We did close tenders for this work, March 5th, the low tender was Rivard Excavating, and that's presented in table in the comments section. The project is included in the 2019 list of drain maintenance projects in our budget. I would like to note that the report says the municipal share of the works would be approximately 18 percent, and that should be revised to say 8 percent.
You just saved 10 percent, great. Just found some money for Dave.
And all costs associated with the work would be assessed to the benefiting property owners according to the latest drain bylaw. So we are recommending that this work be awarded to Rivard.
Thanks Alan, is there no, the assessments have already been out there? I'm just, I'm just so amazed because this is, this is the part of the, of the county or the town that the water goes north. So I mean, you know, this is going to the Ruscombe River, so, are the assessments been put out already for this?
Yes, we did go through a, a new assessment schedule process approximately two years ago, so the, so the, so we went through those mailings and notifications, and we were in front of council presenting, presenting that work, and the, the new report was accepted and adopted.
Great, thank you. Any questions from Alan? Councillor Thiessen?
Alan, that drain runs north, does that drain into the Ruscombe River that they just cleaned out a year or so ago? What I guess what I'm getting, is the other side clean, or are we cleaning, cleaning our portion and it's still full on the other side?
Yes, it's my understanding that Kingsville did clean their side of the drain downstream about two years ago.
And then we would be able to clean all the way underneath County Road 37? Or do we have to coordinate that with Kingsville to do their half and we do our half, or how does that? I just want to make sure it gets cleaned all the way through.
I'll, I'll relay that to Luann, I don't know if Kingsville did it when they did their work, or if we planned on doing it as part of ours.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other questions? Seeing none, motion then, you have the recommendations there? Recommendations to have Sloan drainage, Councillor Thiessen, seconded, Councillor Wilkinson? Any questions? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. I know you're going to be around for later too, so. The next one is regarding the lease and purchase of a multi-function copiers, and it's Dave, thanks.
Thanks Deputy Mayor, members of council. Purpose of this report is to get council approval to enter into a new lease agreement for some multi-function copiers, as well as purchase two multi-function copiers. As part of the operating budget for 2019, council approves spending for copiers for all the facilities. Administration collaborated to define the specs required for each of these units, and we released a request for proposal. Administration recommends a refresh cycle of no more than four years for this type of equipment, and the current inventory is between four and eight years old. So when administration issued the RFP, we did it in combination of multi-function units as well as the software to manage these units. We received four proposals for this, and submissions were evaluated on the overall solution proposed, the financial component, support, and warranty. At the conclusion of the process, Calcom Document Division was chosen as preferred proponent, as their proposal met all required technical specs in addition to being the lowest cost overall. Subject to council approval, administration will move forward with the lease of eight of these copiers and the purchase of two of these units. Administration recommends that the surplus of equipment be disposed of, and the, this equipment that's currently coming due on lease be returned back to the leasing company. With this, Calcom will be returning the equipment back on our behalf, and the municipality will incur no additional cost for this, for the returning of the equipment. The one thing to note is the over expenditures for PCC and water on this will be less than $2,000, including net HST this year, and the tax funded budget shortfalls for the other departments will be absorbed in their respective operating budgets. So the recommendation is that council authorize that we enter into the lease of these units as well as the purchase, and administration be authorized to return the existing copiers back to leasing company and dispose of the older outdated multi-function units.
Thanks Dave. Is there any questions, well Dave? Councillor Thiessen?
Dave, just a question here, help me around this, we at budget time approved four units for lease, and, or four units for lease, and now we're looking at two new units plus an additional six units, or no, sorry, an additional four units for lease.
units for leasing. There's just some discrepancy in the number of units, I think. And is it because it was a better deal to do them all now?
There was always five units that were being leased. What we, what we've looked at in the past is when certain units, when, when the lease came due, we opted to purchase existing equipment sometimes and then redeploy them to lower utilization departments. We do this when the proponent is the same, if, if they win the, the next RFP because it keeps the fleet the same, the consistency across all departments. And the other reason we'll buy out existing equipment is if the track record on it is good and we haven't had too many issues. So, with this, we always had five, five leases in the operating budget and we had the, the money set aside to purchase at least one of the units. We did the assessment this year and realized that the purchase, to purchase out a couple of these machines on lease was almost the same price to buy two brand-new units instead of that. And because we changed vendors this time, we had different copiers. We wanted to keep a consistent user experience over all the departments and all the facilities. That's why we chose to do this, this time.
Okay, that explains, that's what I was looking for exactly. Thank you.
Counselor Hammond?
Deputy Mayor, thank you. David, I have a two-part question for you. Currently, how many of the copiers that we have do we own? Number one. And the second question would be this. One of the ones that we own, rather than returning it to the leasing company, is it possible to donate that, one of those copiers? And I'm primarily thinking about the Bank Theater. I know they don't have one and I know they need one. So, is it possible to donate one of those ones that we were going to return to the leasing company that we own? And is it possible also, and I understand there's a maintenance agreement on these, is it possible to transfer that as well?
So, of the 10 that are, that are in this report here, five are being returned on lease. Two of the other ones are no longer supported and no parts can be given. So, essentially, there's three other ones that we're talking about. So, as for being able to donate them, certainly, we can look into that. My main concern is, and I pose the question to the existing vendor right now, is it even a possibility to transfer ownership on the current maintenance agreement? I haven't got an answer as of yet. I'm still waiting to hear back from them. I think the, the potential issue may be the maintenance agreement, when we enter into, we get special government pricing. If we send it to, or if we transfer that to a different company, I don't know, they're, they're looking into it. I don't know that that could just be transferred in kind right over for a new not-for-profit organization to take, take over. So, I'm, I'm waiting on an answer. I did definitely pose the question.
And if I may continue, thank you, thank you, Dave. And we did talk about this briefly today. If in fact, the recommendation goes through, then we'll look at needing to change, if in fact, this can happen, we're going to look at needing to change number two in the recommendation here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, if that's the case and we don't, we're not allowed to, the, the deal's already done and they're getting an older unit and we can't transfer the, the unit back where the maintenance fee, what's your wishes then after that?
Well, currently, we don't have an answer as to whether or not we can transfer the maintenance agreement and/or how that would be done. So, Peter obviously is going to have.
Peter?
What I would suggest is that the language is, is flexible enough that the, number two, administration be authorized to return existing copiers back to the leasing company and dispose of older, the dispose of still gives administration to, to deal with it. If we're able to do what council is asking us to do, we, we will do that. And if not, we'll, we'll have to follow through with the, the directions in the RFP.
Thank you. And that, that explains it and that's the reason I brought it forward.
And you're making?
I'm making that recommendation.
Motion?
And a motion, yes.
Thank you. Secretary, Counselor Wilkerson, any other questions? All in favor? Engineering Report 0619, Counselor Allen, in regards to Coronation Avenue Sewer Separation Tender Results.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The purpose of this report is to award the contract for the Coronation Sewer Separation Project to J&amp;J LaPere Infrastructures. And the extent of the reconstruction is really the entire length of Coronation Avenue and that's presented in Figure 1 of the report. The works would include the construction of new sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water main, roadway, curbing, sidewalk, and street lighting. And as we've discussed earlier this year, the project is planned to move forward with a shared cost from the benefiting property owners for the sanitary sewer component of the works. A public information center was held November the 2nd, 2017 to notify residents and property owners of the work and the municipality is intent to assess a share of the cost of the works to the benefiting properties. And the shared schedule of construction costs was attached to that invitation letter and it was sent to all of the affected residents. And a copy of that is attached to this report as Schedule A. Residents generally felt that the property owner's share of the work was too high. They also expressed displeasure with the amount of existing trees that were to be removed due to the construction. The municipality evaluated all the trees with regard to health, maturity, potential construction activities, and proposed our infrastructure locations. And modifications were made to design drawings to minimize the amount of trees that were to be removed. And that would be, we looked at sidewalk locations. Administration reviewed the consideration for placing sidewalk along the proposed curb on the south side of the road, but this consideration resulted in the requirement to remove several additional trees based on location of existing trees. The proposed location of the sidewalk on the south side that we have in the, in the contract, which is approximately 3.3 meters or 10 feet south of the curb, would minimize the required number of trees that we can remove. And we looked at the, the drawings and it, it looks like if we put the sidewalk closer to the road or against the back of curb, we'd lose seven additional trees along Coronation Street. On January 28, 2019, I brought a report to council, ENG 0219, and we presented the, the alignment of Coronation Street and we talked about the, the ball boats at the east and west end of Coronation Street. We did make those modifications to the, to the throats of the intersection with some softer radii, larger radii at Erie Street and, and Shirk Street and a wider throat through the entrances. And you can see that, it's presented in figures three, two and three of the report. So, the shared cost recoveries from the properties are limited, again, are limited to the construction of the new sanitary sewer and private sanitary sewer connections. All other works such as roadway, curbing, and sidewalk are funded per Table 2 of my report. The property owner's share is established by way of our annual fees bylaw and that includes a, a unit cost per meter for the construction of a sanitary sewer and a per sanitary service connection cost per sanitary sewer service. So, on March the 11th, we closed tenders for that work. We received eight compliant tender submissions and they're presented in Table 1 of the report. J&amp;J LaPere Infrastructures was the low tenderer and they have worked in Leamington in the So, having a look at the financial impact section in Table 2, if you combine the engineering, this is a combined engineering budget, sewer budget and water budget components, we had budgeted $2.1 million for this work. And you can see, if you look at Table 2, the, the engineering roads capital budget was set at $840,000 and we, we look to, to save approximately $185,000 in that budget. The 2019 sewer budget was set at $905,000 and we expect to save $255,000. And this is all savings based on the tender submission. And the 2019 water capital was set at $360,000 and we expect to save about, just over $100,000 for, an expected savings of about $540,000 based on the tender submissions. Following construction and after reconciling all the project costs, administration will then bring a report back to council to pass the associated bylaw so that we can assess cost against the work. Property owners will be invited to that meeting and they can make submissions to council if they desire. And again, we are recommending that we award this work to J&amp;J Infrastructure.
Thank you, Alan. Before I go to council, we have a delegation after this, so we're going to, if you have any questions of Alan now, we'll ask it now or then listen to the delegation or ask after, it's whatever you would like. Tim?
I got a question.
Okay, go ahead, Tim.
Thank you for the report, Alan. I'm glad to see LaPere got it. You know, these guys have done, I think, overall, they've done a really good job around our town. I think they've proven themselves as, you know, they seem to be, residents seem to be very happy with them. I wouldn't say very happy, but I think they do a, a good job with difficult situations as, my experience with the LaPere guys, at least. I'm glad to see they got it. My question though is, the discussions, I'm sure you've had them with them when it comes to the timeframe, important street this summer. Can you share some background on how those discussions have gone and what their feelings are?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We did actually have a pre, pre-construction meeting with them just because of the work they've had lately and we expressed to them our concern that we want them to, they, they had a chance to bid on one of the first projects let this year. We expect them to put forces to the job so that they can get the work done. So, we've expressed that to them. They've told us that they're excited to start as soon as possible. They have, up until July 13th, to finish the work as written in the contract, but they've expressed that they'd like to get the job at least substantially performed by the end of June. So, they can, they can make money too. They want to get in and out as fast as they can. So, they are excited to get started at the work. We did remind them that the Hogs for Hospice, Hogs for Hospice event is the first weekend in August, August 2nd to the 4th. They're well aware of that and they are aware of the importance of Coronation Street to that function. Just so council know, so council knows on this particular project, we are intending to have the contractor build everything up to except, up to and, but accepting the surface asphalt. We'll, we'll build the, the curbing, the landscaping, sod, trees, that'll all go in, but surface asphalt would go down the following spring. I'm not sure what else I can share with you, but they are well aware of our timelines and they're, they're aware of our concerns.
What's the rest of their workload look like, in particular around Leamington? They still have outstanding projects that they're still trying to finish up this year too. Like, do they have a ton of other projects on the go that could maybe interfere with this, their timeline?
Well, that, that's true, that LaPere does have work that they have to do now. They're working currently on a pump station in, in Seakliff Park and they're, they're tidying up a few things, some very minor things on the Peely Drive project. It's difficult for me to say what they have now. They're, they're bidding on, even as of today, they're bidding on work, so I don't know what their workload is. They're fully intending on bidding on work as any other contractor, but we have, we have, I believe, their first contract from this year. So, it's hard for me to say that I know what their workload is because like, as I say, they're bidding on things even today.
Well, you all heard it, July 13th is done according to Alan.
Okay.
We're going to hold you to that.
Counselor Thiessen?
Just a couple of questions, Alan. On the table here, there are asterisks beside J.J. LaPere's numbers, which says denotes adjusted tender price as per R.C. Spencer's review. Could you explain that to me? Were the rest of them all reviewed as well, the same as LaPere's or did R.C. Spencer just do LaPere's?
So, typically, we ask the, the engineer that we have on, on the project to review all of the tenders and they did that. And in the event that they, they come across an addition or a multiplication error, which they, they likely did with the LaPere project. So, as an example, if there were 10 trees in the, in the schedule of items and prices, 10 trees and they had bid $20 per tree and they didn't write $200 in the next line, they wrote $180. What we do is we take the, the, the number of units, 10, and multiply it by their bid price of $20 per tree and we, we put the $200 in that column and then it gives us a new total. So, that's just an example of things that can happen in contracts. And that's likely what happened here, that there was an addition, an addition or a multiplication error, which we corrected.
So, further to that three, Deputy Mayor, was, what was the difference? Was it just in tree pricing or was it a $100,000 difference or? I'm just curious as to what the, why they're the only ones that made the mistake and how big it was to begin with. I, I just find it interesting, they're the only ones that have the asterisk and they're the ones that won the bid.
Gaspar, you want to come up and explain?
That's fair enough, but it happens occasionally. We'll, we'll close 10 tenders and there won't be any error, errors. In this case, there was an error. But you'll see that pop up every now and then when we close a tender. It's nothing drastic. If I'm not mistaken, they, they're, the tender price that we read that day was just over $1.2 million and the number you see here in the table is just over $1.2 million. So, I don't think it was a big number.
Gaspar, you want to explain a little bit more, please?
Yeah, just like Alan alluded to, the variance between Spencer's number and what they wrote down, I believe it's less than $1,000. I think their original tender was $1.292 and change, but in redoing the math, they were slightly lower actually than what they submitted.
So, they were actually the, even with that mistake, they were the low bidder?
Yep.
We just made sure it was a little bit lower?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you did bring up one thing that caught my interest. They will be putting sod down?
You heard that here first?
Yeah.
Counselor Hammond, anything?
Yes, Deputy Mayor. A couple of points and I think it's, I think it's important that we flip back to the last paragraph under comments, that all the residents who, you know, are affected by this project on Coronation understand that it says that these are the numbers based on the construction of the smallest diameter sewer construction and I don't think, Al, you touched on that, as well as the average conditions and the minimum depth and so on. So, that when they see a large pipe going in the ground because we're moving water from elsewhere, they're not paying for that large pipe. They're just paying for the smallest diameter pipe, pipe, in other words, at the minimum cost so we can allot to them. So, when I picked up on that in the last paragraph, I thought it should have been noted. Also too, and I wanted to pass this on, we had a discussion during our, our strategic planning session. We have all heard over the, over the past constructions about the lack of communication and I, and I mentioned this, Al, for you and Gaspar because he's here, the lack of communication between not necessarily us, but between the builder and, and the people, the affected residents. You know, and I, I brought forward a suggestion that we, we designate someone that will go and knock on the doors and say, your water's going to be shut off tomorrow morning at 8:00 so that that in fact happens at 8:00 tomorrow morning, not when they get up to take a shower, they find out the water has been shut off. And I know we try our darndest to make sure that that doesn't happen, but you know, there were some other ones on Parkdale where they, they were carrying home groceries and didn't realize that they couldn't get up the road and, and all of those things. So, I think it's important for us to have as, as little impact on the residents as we possibly can. I mean, they don't want to pay that, that fee as it is and what makes it even worse to them is, is the fact that it's the unknown, you know, and not being treated what they think is fairly for the work that's being done. So, I pass that on. I know Rob was aware of that, as I said, and, and we had quite a discussion about it at the time, but I, I thought it was important to bring it forward for you two fellows because you're here. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of admin? We have a delegation here. If you'd like to come up, Dennis, and state your name, your address, and you're on the clock right now. Five minutes.
Good evening. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Burbicki, council, administration. I know I'm a day late and a dollar short to this conversation.
But we want to know who you are and where you live also.
Sorry, Dennis Cale.
Yes.
32 Coronation Avenue.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. But I've had some personal issues with family health that's been keeping me away. A couple of weeks ago, I had been watching CFTV and saw the replay of the council meeting where we were discussing, discussing the project on Coronation Avenue. It actually was just turned on at the time when they were talking about these bump outs, which I don't really understand the purpose of them, but it's not really what I'm here to speak about this evening. It's more about the sidewalk location. Because the traffic at the corner of Shirk and Coronation flows beautifully all the time. And now we're going to put a restriction in. And I think it's gonna cause more trouble than it will help the situation out. But just to get back on the, uh, the sidewalk situation, why is the sidewalk five feet wide on Coronation, which is the residential neighborhood? And on Shirk, it's four feet wide, which has much more pedestrian traffic? Couple of, I'm here to speak with a couple of neighbors at the west end of our block with the sidewalk side, not down at Erie Street.
You wanna, you wanna try, I'm not, I'm not the expert, but I'm, I'm sure Alan will answer that question before you move on.
Sure, okay, yeah, that's fine, yeah. It's just some things that were brought up.
Thank you through you Deputy Mayor. So, sidewalks, uh, uh, have sort of progressed over the years. That, you know, they started out as footpaths and then, uh, some people installed two-foot sidewalks. And then municipalities would install three-foot sidewalks. And at some point in time, we graduated to a four-foot sidewalk. And now we put in five-foot sidewalks. And that's for a number of reasons. Uh, one is we're trying to promote, uh, healthy eating, or, sorry, I'm thinking of, uh, elementary school, healthy eating, active living. But we're trying to promote active living. So, the five-foot sidewalk would, you can appreciate, would allow two people to walk down the sidewalk side by side or pass each other without, uh, without too much discomfort. The other thing we, uh, were challenged with is, is clearing snow from sidewalks in the winter and over the years. And over the years, we've found that, um, to, um, best clear the snow and, uh, put a, a piece of equipment, a tractor together with a plow. The combination to clear snow, get the right size plow is about fifty some odd inches, uh, more than four feet. So, to get the sidewalk cleared and have a tractor drive down the, the sidewalk, we make the sidewalks five feet wide. So, uh, for maintenance purposes and just for active living. And generally across the province, sidewalk has gone from two, three, four, and now up to five feet, uh, when it's not against the back of curb. That's just the progression of it.
Right.
Okay, thank you. One down.
Okay, no, I understand now, but like I said, for the amount of foot traffic that is actually on Coronation, you may have fifteen people in the course of a day.
Hopefully, this changes it.
Over the course of a day, yeah. Or in Shirk, you may have a hundred. So, that's, I just wonder why the sidewalk in a residential area is so much wider than, you know, where the main traffic is. Now, and also the location, I understand why we want to save trees and I appreciate that. But why can't we contour the sidewalk around the trees and bring it closer to the roadway where there are no trees to be taken out?
Alan?
Well, um, as far you, moving the sidewalk in a sort of a nonlinear, um, uh, well, we, we liked, we'd prefer to put the, the infrastructure in, linear infrastructure in versus that kind of thing. Uh, for one thing, getting back to the winter maintenance, um, and perhaps this question might be better answered by somebody else. But as far as winter maintenance goes, it's easier for our, our staff to drive down in a straight line, um, and, and clear a sidewalk versus asking them to find out, to sort of interpret where the sidewalk might be. That doesn't sound, that doesn't sound good. It sounds like we're not giving consideration to trees or we're not giving consideration to other things. But it's just one of the considerations that we, we do have. The other thing is, um, really just trying to, to look at, uh, the other utilities that are in the right of way. I mean, designers are faced with grading challenges, uh, soil conditions, um, all of the other utilities that are, are there. Bell, gas, water, Kojiko, et cetera, and now fiber. And we like to keep corridors for all those things. Some of the utilities, well, most utilities don't like when we put sidewalk or something on top of some of their utilities. So, it's a little more difficult for maintenance. Or when we're building it, we could damage their infrastructure. Uh, so for all sorts of reasons, we like to keep corridors for, for different things. And the corridor for sidewalks, uh, is, sidewalk is in fact a piece of infrastructure that's in our road cross-section. Not unlike curbing and, and, uh, hydro and gas. So, it fits into a, a place in the cross-section of our corridors and, and we like to put them in, in, uh, in linear fashion, I guess.
Well, I understand that, but if you look at the Erie Street end, there is a curve and the sidewalk goes right to the street. Right to the curb, according to this drawing. And that's why we were wondering why we couldn't do that around some of the trees, bring it closer. And I understand the need, I'm sorry, I understand the need for snow removal, I understand that, but ten feet for snow removal. And that was one of the considerations. I did attend an open house we had in two thousand seventeen. And was one of the concerns, but we seemed to, okay, we're just gonna save the trees and don't worry about the sidewalk. Whereas if we, we, I, we have to live with this every day. You go to the side now, you're gonna see this five-foot expanse of cement from one end to the other. Whereas why not put a little meander in there around the tree? If I get to Shirk, I turn right, right away, the first tree, the sidewalk goes around that tree. It just looks a little nicer. It's not, I know, if you don't live on Shirk, you don't have to see it every day. But we live there, we see it, just as we understand about these bump outs and trying to reduce the smooth flow of traffic. You know, we see this every day. And that's why, you know, these concerns were brought up with a couple of my neighbors and myself. But just to be a little more aesthetically pleasing, it's a beautiful block. I just moved there two and a half years ago and it won the best Blooming block in a beautiful neighborhood and I'm very fortunate to live there. And every day, there was another part of, I know it was brought up before, about the safety of that intersection. Well, every day, I walk my dog to Seacliff Park. I've never had an incident at that intersection at Shirk and Coronation. People have always given us room. Four times, I've almost been hit with my dog crossing Seacliff at the light. And I cross when the little lighted man is going like that, I push the button. Once by one of our counselors.
Which one?
His son was in his eye. But this is a more of a safety issue there. I don't see the safety issue at Coronation and Seacliff to why to narrow that. And, you know, as the, it's almost like a reverse chicane that we have here. And I know when we have the large events such as Hogs for Hospice or the Canada Day celebrations, the sidewalk goes from four feet up to five feet across the street, five feet, then it closes down again. Well, this is gonna cause congestion of that pedestrian traffic when that sidewalk closes in again. At four feet now, these people are gonna back up into the intersection. You know, and like I said, this is something we see because we live there, whereas people who don't live there may not see.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's, we'll take it into consideration, but I think the design's already done.
Well, I understand that. Like I said, because of other issues, I haven't been able to come and speak at council for this. But like I said, I just, I know it's done and I'm just wasting air.
No, 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 you're wasting your opinion, that's fair.
Because like I said, I don't, the width of the sidewalk, why can't that sidewalk design be altered a little bit at this time? I mean, the project, that's gonna be the last, one of the last things that go in, the sidewalks. Why can't we just take another look at that sidewalk construction to make it more appealing to the people who have to live with it every day? Not to someone who does not live in the neighborhood.
Can consider it. No promises.
Oh, I understand.
Rob, Rob, uh, has a question.
Deputy Mayor Rubiki, um, I mean, I guess the other thing is I, I don't just want to, you know, give lip service for the sake of moving this along. Um, you know, we did look long and hard, had meetings internally, um, to talk about the sidewalk placement and what we could do. Um, we are challenged, as Alan referenced, um, with the amount of buried infrastructure that goes in these public right of ways. All of the infrastructure runs in a linear fashion, you know, beneath the ground. Uh, one thing Alan, um, didn't mention on the sidewalk instruction is that we do try and avoid, we try and keep it as linear as possible for accessibility reasons as well. I know, uh, Council Hammond's on the Accessibility Committee in Leamington. I know there, there are little things, um, but when you're dealing with accessibility and try and make it, to try and make a community, um, friendlier, uh, for accessibility purposes, it's all those little things that, that tend to add up. Um, so if we can avoid having sidewalks, you know, meander, we do that to provide a, a nice linear look and feel. So, um, I think if, if we could have brought the sidewalk in closer to, uh, to the road, to the boulevard, you know, we would have done that already. This current alignment saves as many trees as we can and is in what we think is a good placement, given everything else in the ground. So, I mean, tried to, to convey that, uh, in the past. I know it's not ideal for some. This was, excuse me, certainly a situation where we had, uh, conflicting priorities brought forth by the neighborhood with regards to trying to save as many trees as we could, uh, while also, you know, trying to keep the sidewalk back away from the houses. Still in the public right of way, um, but back away from the property lines as, as far as possible. And this is, we felt was, you know, uh, a, a good compromise. Or frankly, you know, we, we took the weight of, of saving those trees, um, and ended up with the alignment we ended up. And, you know, it is our preferred design to have the sidewalk, to have a boulevard. Because again, it provides, um, a place for us to put all of that snow when we push the snow off the road. It ends up on the, and there's many locations where we have the sidewalk straight up against the curb. Uh, but if we can avoid it and we can have a boulevard, that is our preference.
Okay, thanks.
No, I understand. Like, I can see why you need a boulevard, but just to have a ten-foot boulevard there, now who's gonna maintain this property? This ten feet, you know, we're gonna put down sod. In my, my front yard, I've been eliminating a couple of the grass to, so I don't have to use water, which is more environmentally friendly. And just putting in gardens, now I'm gonna have ten feet of grass that I don't have a lawnmower to cut it. Who's gonna maintain that? Fertilize it, water it?
Good point, but you wanna make your house look good. You, everybody, you know, the town owns that, but yet you wanna take care of it yourself.
Well, we do, but everyone I've spoken to said, I'm not gonna cut that grass. And my neighbor at the corner, you know, has, looks like the master's golf course is lawn. And he's refusing to cut that grass. He said, I'm not gonna.
Just don't let it get over eight inches because if the town has to come in and cut it, we'll be charging it back to you, even though it's our town.
Charge it back to us?
Yeah, even though, even though it's our grass, you gotta, you gotta maintain it.
So, I have to maintain property that doesn't belong to me? Okay, well, we'll see. We'll deal with that when it comes to.
Okay.
And just one last issue, as I was speaking with my neighbor at thirty-four Coronation, he has a tree that, there's no bark left on this tree and he had come to council. I asked him to come with me tonight, but he said, I'm better off coming by myself.
Okay, then we'll, we'll ask Alan if, you know, it's not like.
I know there, I'm not an arborist, professional arborist, even though I do play one in my own yard. But this tree, every time there's a, there's no bark left on this tree. And he said he was in, come to town hall down, and he, they said they don't know if we're gonna take that tree down. Are we gonna leave the tree? We're not sure, but this tree.
Alan?
Through you Deputy Mayor, I, I brought the arborist report. Uh, it's a, it's a sycamore tree. And, uh, according to the arborist, it's in great health and vigor. Uh, so we would, we would try to keep it typically.
So, it's a sycamore tree?
Okay. And it's a good health.
Great.
All right, that was his concern and he just wanted me to bring up here.
Before you go, just hang on, any questions of the delegation? Okay, then, uh, stick around for a second, comment?
Sure, yes.
Dennis, first of all, thanks for coming.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me to talk.
Meeting late, yeah, it's, uh, and I always feel like we're obligated to give you back, uh, some sort of feedback. You know, you take the time to come and, uh, it's, it's owed to you. Yeah, I, I've had a good look. I travel that road just about every day. I use it. You know, I'll, I'll admit it, I use it as a shortcut to stay, to get over to Shirk Street. Uh, I'm one of those people that cut down that road and travel it twice a day. I've had a couple of people reach out to me too with the same questions as you have regarding the sidewalk. Uh, a couple of ladies down the road from me there. And I, I love this street too. Coronation, I think, is a beautiful street. Uh, and yeah, it's got the recognition it deserved over the years, winning Blooming Awards.
I feel very fortunate to live there.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a house I wasn't even up for sale yet that we were able to purchase.
And so I took a little extra consideration about that, you know, and, and took a better look at this thing here. And I've seen the flags out and the paints and everything like that. And what I really like about this project is, is that Alan, you know, at the last meeting, he really listened to all the delegates that showed up and all the conversations that we had up here at council. We've been burnt a little bit when it comes to our traffic calming measures. And those are the ball boats at the end of the roads that you're talking about, you know? And I think, uh, council agrees that there is merit and worth in these ball boats, you know? But going to the extreme that we have on other projects, Danforth comes to mind. Mill Street is close, but, uh, you know, it wasn't the end of the world, those worked out. But Danforth is one where we've, we've had our, uh, you know, our feet held to the fire. So, we're very cautious of that. And I really like the adjustments that they have made. It shows here that, uh, they listened to us and didn't take it to those extremes, that they've tried to, uh, adjust them back to make the best of, uh, you know, 'cause I think they are warranted. I, I think it's worthwhile, like I told the ladies that live on your street there. You've got a beautiful neighborhood there and guys like me shouldn't be jetting down there to use it as a shortcut, you know? It's, uh, it's, that's entering into residential family neighborhoods there. We kinda want to give the impression or deter people on our main arteries that should carry the traffic, Erie and Shirk. Don't use this road, you know? So, it's a little bit of a, just a reminder why it's there. Plus, it makes it safe for people to cross a smaller intersection. That's where I, that's where I see the merit in this. Uh, I think it protects your neighborhood, uh, by having just a reminder in the way of these ball boats at both ends. So, I'm gonna support, uh, our administration on this one. The one, uh, the one unique thing about your properties over there, and I think this is a saving grace for having, uh, I too really had difficulty with the placement of the sidewalks. They're, they're further back. And I get why. But you guys have all got long driveways back to your house. You're very lucky in that regard that you have these nice long driveways. I've seen this over on, in other neighborhoods, uh, recently too, where we've installed these healthy wide, uh, sidewalks in places that don't have as long of a driveway. And I really think those people have got legitimate beef there, absolutely. And going forward, anything that I see on a site plan that comes to me, or sorry, any sort of plan that I see where that's at, I'll be questioning that and saying, we have to, we have to shave it back somehow or move it closer to the curb. But in this case, I respect where they're going with this. I get it. Uh, you know, they got, I'm glad that they're considering the trees, first of all. I really am, that they've gone out of their way to think about this and say, we're, we're taking the trees into consideration. I respect the part about the maintenance of, uh, of the sidewalks. Uh, that makes sense to me, along with the equipment. And, uh, so, so I hear your concerns, but I think, uh, staff has done their best to make the best of, uh, inconvenient situations. It's never convenient for anybody when we do these projects, but I think they have gone out of their way to try and make it the best they can for you.
No, I understand. And like you said, we're very fortunate to have long driveways. But when you have an event such as Hogs for Hospice or Canada Day Celebration, I know, sorry, Counselor Dunn's still on vacation, lucky him. But he mentioned about the parking. Now, with the parking, with the sidewalk location, in my neighbor's driveway, when it's Canada Day or Hogs for Hospice, there's six vehicles parked in that driveway. With the sidewalk location, it'll only be able to allow four. In my driveway, six vehicles, with the sidewalk location, there's only gonna be four. So, we're gonna be taking up spaces on the road. So, we're losing, in those first six houses, you're gonna lose ten spots on the road. Come Hogs for Hospice or Canada Day Celebration. Because my family and friends are coming, I wanna make sure they have some place to stay at my, my house. So, I'm gonna park on the road so they have a place to use. My friends and family are gonna fill up the rest of the driveway and my front lawn. So, we are losing spaces. I know, like I said, I'm sorry, Counselor Dunn isn't here to address this, 'cause that was one of his concerns. But just in the first six houses, you're losing ten spaces on the road for those events.
Okay, and, and, and thank you and don't park on your lawn. That's a tickable offense.
Yeah, so is crossing the sidewalk, right?
If there's no further questions, uh, we do have a recommendation here. Recommendations for, moved by Counselor Wilkinson, second by Counselor Hammond. Any questions on the motion? All in favor? Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time and, uh.
It was only, if we wait another twenty minutes. Moving on now to, uh, ten point six in regards to requests for a partial release of site plan securities. Danielle? Danielle?
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Verbeke. Administration has received requests from property owners to consider the reduction of securities that are currently being held for works that are required under approved site plan agreements. As part of the site plan approval process, securities are collected based on a value of construction that is provided by the applicant's engineer. That amount is submitted to the municipality upon approval of the site plan, and it is held until all the work shown on the plans and detailed in the agreement is completed. Securities are collected by the municipality to ensure site works are finished, as well as meet minimum municipal standards. Securities can also be used by the municipality to do the work, retain the necessary professionals to do the work, or to cover legal expenses associated with requiring the work to be completed by the owner. There is no regulation or accepted technical standard to lay out when a security can be released or reduced. At this time, the development manual, as well as the standard site plan agreement, both require that all work be completed and do not include a provision to allow for the reduction of securities before then. Applicants are advised of this requirement during pre-consultation, as well as part of the review of the final agreement. Consideration of a partial release would seem reasonable in certain circumstances, and would only be considered when the municipality is satisfied that, at a minimum, all onsite servicing is functioning as required. In particular, we wanna ensure that the stormwater management system is in place to control onsite water runoff as construction is underway on the site. Council has been provided with the details of the properties which are requesting a portion of their securities be released at this time. They're all similar in nature as the substantial amount of onsite work has been completed. It's also been certified by their consulting engineer. That same consulting engineer has provided an estimate of the value of the outstanding work, and that estimate has been reviewed and accepted by engineering services. The standard 12 months to have work completed under the terms of the agreement has expired for each of these properties, however, that agreement contains provisions to allow for the extension of that time period upon approval in writing. Requiring that each owner enter into an amending agreement would ensure that the municipality's ability to require the work be completed or use the security as set out in the original agreement is maintained, and it should include an, and it's, sorry, it should include a six-month extension of the time to complete the works. It is administration's opinion that a reduction to the security held by the municipality may be a reduction to the overall incentive to get the works done in an acceptable and timely manner. However, consideration of a partial release is a practice that is already incorporated into how securities are maintained for the development of a subdivision, and appears to be a common practice among other municipalities throughout Ontario who collect securities in a similar manner to Leamington. Administration intends to further research whether a policy for the partial release of securities could be considered in the best interest of the municipality, while allowing some flexibility for developers. A further report from administration will be presented to council upon consultation with the various departments that are involved. Administration is in a position to specifically support the partial release of the securities for the properties as listed within the recommendation of the report, and note that the absence, that in, in the absence of a policy establishing the manner in which securities should be released, have suggested that it is reasonable to maintain twice the value of the outstanding works as provided by the consulting engineer. It is also recommended that each applicant enter into an amending agreement to acknowledge the reduction in securities and the timeline for completion. I am also in a position to note that since the time the, this report was completed, the requests received from the owner of 34 Seneca, which is listed as number three, and the recommendation is no longer required, as they are now in a position to complete the remaining work, and upon inspection by the municipality, we will be able, or will be in a position to release that full security amount. I'm happy to address any questions of council.
Thank you. Uh, any questions of Luann, councillor Hammond? Sorry.
Danielle, yes, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
I got dreams on my mind.
Not a question, you know, but a comment. You know, we get asked quite often about people who have outstanding securities, because obviously they want their money back. But when you read the length and depth of this report and the work that goes into it, Danielle, you understand why it's just not a question of being able to hand them their money back without going through this lengthy process that you have to go through in order to do this. So I compliment you on being able to do the ones you can do, and understand why it takes as long as it does to, and I hope, I hope most people out there do understand why it takes as long as it does to get some of these securities back. So a good job and a good report. Thank you.
Any further questions? No, and I'm glad, I mean, in case something does happen, we have some money to fall back on to complete the project, so. Okay, so moved by councillor Thiessen, supported by councillor Hammond. I know you're not gonna read the recommendation, but it's a lengthy one, but it's all there, everybody understands it, all in favor, and carried. Thank you, Danielle. Moving on to, I guess Danielle's gonna be still there. Moving on to report of, annual report of the Leamington, I was gonna say Mercy, 'cause I said on that committee, Leamington Municipal Heritage Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm pleased to provide counsel with the annual report on the activities of the Leamington Municipal Heritage Advisory Committee. This report contains a summary of some of the significant tasks that were completed by the committee in 2018, and I'll just highlight a few. We did have our third public open house. It was held in the summer of 2018, and it was once again very well attended by the public, including owners of properties that were listed on the heritage register. The open house served as a perfect venue to have residents participate in a heritage survey. The results of those survey, that survey was shared with council when we were adopting the updates to the register. That was presented by our past heritage summer research assistant, Olivia Ashton. And that survey really provided insight into the public's general support for preserving Leamington's heritage, as well as provided insight into, on how to best assist owners of heritage properties. Administratively, the heritage website has been updated, as well, heritage permit applications were created to assist property owners that either have a designated or listed property, that may be looking to alter their designated property, serve the required notice of intent to demolish a listed property, or perhaps even request that their property be considered for designation. So this will definitely streamline any requests we receive. So now in 2019, we have a newly appointed committee, and we expect to continue to focus on projects that fit in with the mandate of the committee, including an updated walking tour in various formats, respond to requests to research individual properties here in Leamington, as well as look, look into some incentive programs for heritage property owners. This report has been provided for information and to be received by council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and looking forward, I think tomorrow is your meeting, and tomorrow you're handing out your walking tour pamphlets. That's what I was told by a committee member, they're all excited about this, so. Okay. In your spare time. Thank you very much. Any questions of Danielle on this? Seeing none, motion then to accept, to receive it? Thank you, councillor Hammond, councillor Thiessen, all in favor, and carried. One more, or no? Okay, we're gonna talk about the part lot control exemption for Southwinds Estates subdivision.
Last one. Uh, so administration has received a request from the representatives of Southwinds Estates subdivision for consideration of an exemption for the part lot control provisions of the Planning Act for select lots on the north and south side of Somerville Avenue. Southwinds Estates is a approved plan of subdivision, which has satisfied all the conditions of approval. They have entered into a development agreement, and they have constructed the roads and services within phase one of that subdivision. The development agreement and the phasing plan for phase one both contain provisions to permit the development of both townhouse and semi-detached units on the north and south sides of Somerville Avenue. Council may recall, we've seen this exemption requested several times before for these specific properties. To date, three townhouse units have been constructed on the north side of the road, as well as three townhouse units and two semi-detached units on the south side of the road. This approval will only apply to the lots which are currently vacant. So again, part lot control is one of three ways that you can create and convey land. It is most often used to establish the property lines between townhouse and semi-detached units, on the proviso that they're within an approved plan of subdivision. The bylaw being presented this evening is in support of the exemption, and it includes a requirement that the municipality be provided with a copy of the draft reference plans for each lot prior to the deeds being registered, and there is also the provision that the approval will expire on March 26th of 2021. If it is approved, the bylaw will be forwarded to the County of Essex. They are the delegated approval authority. The final approval will allow the owners to register the deeds for each unit as individual properties to convey to separate ownerships. There are no public circulation requirements and no appeal rights in consideration of this approval. The municipality is satisfied that consideration of the request for the exemption from the provisions of part lot control for those lots specified on the north and south side of Somerville Avenue is appropriate for the reasons listed within the report, and recommend that bylaw 2019 to exempt lots 53, 54, 57, and 58 from registered plan 12M 563 from the provisions of the Planning Act be brought forward for consideration, and that the approved bylaw and supporting documentation be forwarded to the County of Essex. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councillor Hammond?
Deputy Mayor, thank you. Danielle, when you receive a site plan, um, control, I mean, we seem to deal with this a lot, where they're looking for, you know, a part lot of control exemption. Do they just usually, these, these subdivision people, put forward a site plan knowing that they're gonna come along and want all of these changes at later date? I mean, are you anticipating a lot of these changes when they submit a site plan? I mean, how much, I guess to my point, how much extra work does this cause you and/or your department, you know, as opposed to having it on the original site plan and knowing what's gonna happen from start to finish, as opposed to the number of changes that take place?
So as part of the plan of subdivision, it would be difficult to create the lots, essentially to identify the center line of walls. And so this is a process that allows them to construct the units, identify the center line, and then come in and register those deeds based on that. The other process that is available is a consent process, and so you're familiar with that process. It requires notification to the neighbors, and we would likely use that if something had changed and people weren't aware that we were considering towns or semis in that area. But typically, when a plan of subdivision comes in, if we're aware that there'll be blocks of townhouses or semis, we anticipate that we will be proceeding through part lot control. It is, obviously, it has no circulation requirements, it's, it's just this process with council. The consent process obviously has a circulation, a public meeting, as well as an appeal period, so it is, it's considerably more, but would be more appropriate if conditions had changed. In this case, we've known they've been there, it's just taken them quite a while to obtain builders for these sites.
Okay, thank you. If there's no more questions, I'm looking for a motion on this. Councillor Thiessen, councillor Hammond, all in favor? Carried. Thank you, Danielle. In regards now to turf maintenance contract, Ken, please.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, members of council. So yeah, this report is on the results of tenders received for turf maintenance contract at various municipal properties and to request council authorization to award the contract to the lowest bidder. So for this tender, administration has added some additional municipal properties, including Bayview Cemetery, several parks, a few trails, all the turf alleys, and additional waterfront lots, and a few boulevards. Five tenders were received, with Cedar Creek Landscaping being the lowest bid. Cedar Creek's bid did meet all the required minimum specifications. They have never worked for Leamington before, the municipality, but they have worked for other municipalities in Essex County who all gave them positive references. So the recommendation is that the 2019 to 2021 turf maintenance contract be awarded to Cedar Creek in the amount of $98,535 plus HST. That would be for the first year, 2019, and that the years two and three of the contract reflect an annual price increase of 2% each year, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the contract. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'll, I have a question, and then I'll go to councillor Thiessen. How often do they cut on a normal year? Is it, is it on as needed, or, you know, and this is just for our laws, this is not the contract of stuff we go after the taller grass, so would they do it once every 10 days?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. We, we break, we specify in the contract different areas, minimum cuts, so there'd be some areas that we may only cut three times a season, but for the, the parks, trails, typical places, it's once a week on a, in a 28-week cycle.
Perfect. Thank you. Councillor Thiessen?
If it's a three-year contract, and, and they haven't worked for us before, and we find that after halfway through the first year, or at the end of the first year, that they're not performing to our specs, is there a way to get rid of them and go with somebody else, or what is the, are we stuck with them for three years?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. We, we would be able to, if, if there was grounds for, you know, very, like, poor performance, we do have performance bonds with them and stuff, and we, there, we do have means to, to cancel the contract.
Anybody, any other questions? We have a motion on the, before you, what's your wishes? Councillor Wilkinson, seconded by councillor Thiessen. Any other questions? All in favor? And carried. Thank you. Now the exciting stuff. Ken, it's in regards to purchasing, fleet purchase of vehicles.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, this report is on the results of tenders received for the replacement of pickup trucks and to request council authorization to award the tender to the lowest bidder. So during the 2019 budget deliberation, replacement pickup trucks were approved for the Public Works Building, Engineering, and Water Departments. One truck per department, so that's a total of four trucks. Tenders were received, and administration confirmed that the lowest bid from Rayom Chevrolet did meet the minimum required specifications. So with the exception of the engineering pickup, each low bid was below budget. The existing engineering truck will be sold at auction, whi, which would be after, obviously, and we, we do this through a public auction, and administration expects that the proceeds will cover the budget variance. Any potential over-budget amount after the sale would be mitigated by the other fleet purchases, which are all under budget as well. So the recommendation is that the purchase of four 2019 Chevrolet pickup trucks in the amount of $132,424 plus HST from Rayom Chevrolet be approved. Thank you.
Questions, comment? Councillor Thiessen?
Yeah, Ken, these, these vehicles are all 10 years old, but how many miles would they have on them? Are they in, still in good shape? With a little bit of care, would they last longer? Could we stretch that out to 12 years or 13 years? Is 10 years just an arbitrary number, or are we actually putting a lot more money into these than, than what we should be at this point?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. So yeah, 10 years in our asset management plan is, has kind of been identified as the expected useful life of a pickup truck. But we don't always, definitely don't always go by that. That's just kind of a, we earmark it that way. For, like, the, the Public Works truck, which has over 100,000 kilometers on it, we, we spent, we typically spend about a few thousand dollars each year on, on that truck alone, and it's actually in, probably of the, of them, probably the best one. Quite often what happens is, when we buy a new truck, the truck that we're replacing often will come to Public Works, and we'll take it from another department, and then we'll give, one of our Public Works truck, we'll, we'll auction it off, because a lot of our Public Works pickup trucks will have almost $200,000, or, not dollars, kilometers on them. You know, rust, interior upholstery's all ripped, and, and pretty banged up and stuff, so we, we usually use them the rest of the way. So they are usually 100,000, easily over that, all, all these trucks, and, and quite used.
Anything further?
So further that, through you, Deputy Mayor, the 100,000, for me, that's just breaking them in. But as long as they are, if, if you can, and move them through the, through the fleet, and if you have other areas to use them, I would really like to see that, and I'm sure a lot of residents would like to see that as well. If we can drive them till they're done, again, they gotta be safe, and they gotta look decent and that sort of thing, but yeah, I'm, I'm glad that they're, they're at least 10 years old, but 10 years old and 100,000 kilometers, wow, I put that on in three years.
I'll, I'll just add one more comment. The one, and the one truck that we're replacing from Public Works, we inherited it from the Town Hall, and it's just a small Ranger truck. It doesn't have four-wheel drive, so now our staff are using it out on job stuck, job sites getting stuck, stuff like that. So that's, it is 10 years. I know 100,000 is actually probably one of the lowest kilometers we've ever traded one in for. The, the water truck, we're planning on possibly bringing that one to the Public Works fleet, and then we're gonna give them one of our one from the Fleet Services, which is pretty banged up, and it gets to the point where it doesn't look very good, so it has a municipal vehicle. So that's probably the, the one that I was referring to. It's... It's a small truck without four-wheel drive, so it's a little bit difficult.
Thanks. And I know Councilor Thiessen was excited they were Chev's, and he was just wanting to know what color are these trucks going to be?
They're all going to be white.
Thank you. Motion on the floor? Councilor Thiessen, seconded by Councilor Wilkerson. Comment or all in favor? All in favor? And carried. Thank you. In regards now to the Hydro One network easement? Who's taking this one? Ruth? Thank you.
Yes, that is my report. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. This is in connection with the Hydro One transmission corridor. As council may recall, in two thousand and sixteen, the municipality granted Hydro One six permanent easements totaling approximately seven point four kilometers in length along the former railway corridor. In two thousand and eighteen, Hydro One requested, and council approved, an additional easement within that corridor on the north side of Mercy Road Six. The easements run from just south of County Road Eight and extend to Mercy Road Six. Hydro One has now requested one further permanent easement and two temporary easements to facilitate the construction of the new electrical distribution facilities. The request for the permanent easement relates to lands which are described in the draft plan, a copy of which is included within the report. They are approximately ten meters wide, a hundred and twenty-five meters long, and a total area of point three acres, and the purpose of this easement is for the right-of-way to benefit the Hydro One Transformer Station, which is located within that corridor on Mercy Road Six. The first temporary easement is for access rights over the former rail corridor from Mercy Road Six, south to Mercy Road Four, and that's shown on the map in your report. That area is ten point three five acres, and the purpose of the temporary easement is for the construction of access road, lay-down area, and construction pad to accommodate equipment. The term is for two years, from June first till May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, with an option to extend on a month-to-month basis. The easement requires that Hydro One restore the lands to their original condition as far as reasonably possible at the conclusion of the term. The second temporary easement is for access rights over the former railway corridor from Mercy Road Six, north to Mercy Road Fourteen, also shown on the map within the report. The total area is fifteen point four seven acres, again, the same purpose for that temporary easement. The term is for nineteen months, to end December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, with again, an option to extend on a month-to-month basis, and again, the same requirement to restore the lands to their original condition. The compensation payable for the permanent easement is three thousand seven hundred and fifty. For the first temporary easement is thirty-one thousand dollars. The second temporary easement is thirty-five thousand dollars. The revenue generated is allocated to the Trails Reserve. So the recommendations are that council approve the granting of the permanent easement to Hydro One Networks for the lands described within the report, that council approve the granting of the temporary easement to Hydro One Networks for the thirty-one thousand dollar purchase price for the lands described within the report. The third recommendation is that council approve the granting of the temporary easement to Hydro One Networks for the purchase price of thirty-five thousand for the lands described within the report, that the Director of Legal and Legislative Services be authorized to execute the relevant agreements in a form as approved by the municipality's solicitor, and that the proceeds from the granting of the easements be allocated to the Trails Reserve.
Thank you very much for the in-depth and some found money for our trails. Any questions, Ruth? Seeing none, a motion then to receive, and thanks, Councilor Hammond, Councilor Thiessen, all in favor? And carried. Thank you. There are, were no matters for approval, other matters for consideration, and we're going to go then to report on closed session.
A closed meeting was held at five thirty PM prior to the open session of the council meeting pursuant to subsection two thirty-nine, two B, and subsection two thirty-nine, two C, a proposed or pending acquisition and disposition of land by the municipality or local board. First item, confidential report, LLS twenty-two nineteen dated March fourth, two thousand and nineteen regarding appointments to Leamington BIA. As a result of this meeting, council provided direction, and the following motion is before council. It's recommended that Sean Bodell, Lisa Bratt, Shelley Gabriel, Gail, Christie Reed, Chad Riley, Chad Robinson, and Gerard Rude be appointed to the Leamington BIA for a term consistent with the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two council term. You'll need a mover?
Mover. Councilor Hammond, Councilor Thiessen, all in favor? Carried. One more?
The second item, verbal report with respect to potential purchase and sale of lands in the Uptown to be considered in closed session, and there's no further direction that came from that. Proper notice of the meeting was given, and the meeting adjourned at five forty-nine PM.
Great. Thank you. Go then to consideration of bylaws, please.
Bylaw twenty-nine nineteen being a bylaw to provide that part lot control shall not apply to certain lands within registered plan twelve M five sixty-three, and bylaw twenty-one nineteen being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of council of the municipality of Leamington at its meeting held March twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
Great, thank you. There were no notices of motion circulated. Does anybody have a notice of motion to bring forward? Oh, I'm sorry, do I need a mover and second for the bylaws? Councilor Hammond, Councilor Wilkerson, sorry about that. All in favor? And carried. No notice of motions? Open session for council and admit? Councilor Thiessen?
Over the last couple of weeks, we've been contacted by one in particular taxi company with some issues that they have. They've got fifteen on the list, and some of these, I think, are probably issues that maybe it's time we do take a look at again. I'm not sure, the taxi bylaws, the newest bylaw is how old?
Three years.
Three years. And they have a couple of issues here that it may not hurt to have a public discussion about, and wondering if we could maybe do that at a future meeting.
Peter?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. I would ask Councilor Thiessen to forward the questions, the issues, to me in writing in an email, and administration can look at these things and bring a report to council on those particular issues, as opposed to, you know, let's redo the whole bylaw, let's look at the specifics of the taxi bylaw where there are concerns, and we'll bring information back to council.
Satisfactory?
Yep.
Anybody else? Councilor Hammond?
Deputy Mayor, thank you. Two points. One, I want to make note of the fact that I think you've done a great job so far filling in for our mayor. You seem to run the meetings pretty sharply on time, so.
Well, a couple of counselors came back, and we're talking, and we did have a delegation tonight, so I won't hold that against you guys.
So thank you for that. Also, too, I want to make mention the fact that your Leamington Flyers are now heading to the final round, starting Thursday night, and back in Leamington again on Sunday night, game time seven-ten, right here in the Highbury Arena, when they take on the London Nationals. We hope all will attend, and you want to be there early, because last week we had almost fifteen hundred people.
Thank you. And on that note of that, I was fortunate enough to drop the puck at the South Point Minor Novice Majors on Saturday at three o'clock, and it's a six-point system. I believe they have four now, four points, so the next puck drop is three o'clock at the Highbury Arena on Saturday, sorry. That's confused with the Flyers, but no, it was well worth it, and these are our future stars, so please come out and support them. My last one was the CEO, Peter, and myself. We met with the Honorable Todd Smith in McGregor on Friday. Mr. Smith is an MPP from Bay of Quinte. He's a Minister of Economic Development, Job Creation, Trade, and he is the Government House Leader, and we have, Peter has forwarded our brief that we presented at Roma, and that councillor, or deputy mayor and myself, met in Ottawa with some of the federal ministers, so.
Regarding the sewers.
Regarding the sewers. So I mean, and there's some notices that we received today about some news about money, but we'll worry about that at another time in the next meeting, and I just hope, you know, if we broadcast across Canada that they're listening, and we appreciate your visit. We appreciate you, meeting you this summer, coming to Leamington to get the full scope of it and a tour, and thank you for now. Is there any other questions? I was going to make my notice of motion, but I've reserved it now for myself, and you people know how I feel right now about an incident that happened today, so I'm not going to talk about that. Motion for adjournment. Councilor Hammond, Councilor Wilkerson, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you for coming out, and thank you for watching.